Thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here. It's a new location for us. We would like to very much thank the city of Sioux Falls for letting us use this beautiful facility as we're doing some remodeling over in the administration building. And our new home is in final preparations for us, so we'll be here for a few weeks, I think. And with that, we'll go ahead and start. I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Benega.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is I'd consider a motion to amend the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, it's my motion to take out of our bills to be paid an item for the Villas at Canyon Creek. That's on our agenda out of the South Dakota CARES account.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes. I would now consider a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's someone here for a public comment, like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. You're on the agenda, so it'll be coming later. Thank you. Anyone else? You're welcome to come forward. If you have signed in, that'd be great. All right, thanks, John.
Hi, I'm John Sharda. I'm here with the pipeline people, but I thought I'd kill two birds with one stone. There were some election problems in Valley Springs on Election Day. I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not, but I thought I'd let you know. I'm running for District 2 House Representatives, and on Election Day, about mid-morning, I was made aware that people were getting the wrong ballots in Valley Springs. They're getting District 25 ballots instead of District 2 ballots. So they were unable to vote for me, which was kind of a, I mean, they're big supporters of mine, and they couldn't vote for me. And they tried telling the poll workers that they had the wrong ballots. The poll workers wouldn't listen to them. So I called the auditor's office, and I called their ass for Ben Kite and said, "Ben is not here." So I told her my story. She says, "Oh, Ben, you better talk to this guy." So she lied to me right away on the phone there. They also told me it was the voter's responsibility to make sure they're voting for the right people, which they tried going to the poll workers and getting the right ballot. The poll workers wouldn't listen to them. Also, at 4:30, they ran out of ballots in Valley Springs, which they shouldn't know how many people there are registered to vote in Valley Springs. They should have enough ballots there. At 6:50, they ran out of ballots again. Also, other friends of mine called me, told me they went to go vote. Been Republicans their whole life, got there, and they weren't Republicans anymore. They don't know how that changed, so they couldn't vote for me either. And it's not all about me, but it's about the people's right to vote, right? They missed out on their opportunity that day. And so I think a good solution to this would be to have just one district vote per precinct. There was 25 in two, both voting in Valley Springs. That'd be helpful. Also, I had a couple other solutions too, but I think we need to have better training for our poll workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this morning? All right, seeing no one moving forward, we'll go ahead to regular business. First item is item 10, Consider a Contract for Professional Services with Charlie Smith. Architecture and Planning for Analysis of Current and Future Needs of the William Ace Lyons Fairgrounds. Carol Muller or Tyler Clatt?
Good morning, Commissioner Tyler Clatt, County Administration Office. I'll try to run this for Carol here. So the next step with the Fairgrounds Task Force is to consider a contract with Charles D. Smith Architecture and Planning for the analysis of current and future needs of the fairgrounds. Smith recently conducted a two-day review of the fairgrounds and met with members of the task force to prepare for a master planning process. The proposed contract includes a physical master planning, a market demand analysis, economic analysis and economic impact by CSL International and Dakota Institute, a civil engineering site analysis, and then a selected building analysis and cost estimating with a contractor that's yet to be determined. Charlie is on Zoom with us right now, along with his colleague Joel Feldman of CSL, and he'd be happy to answer any questions. The proposed contract before you is for $165,000.
All right, thank you. So Charlie, I believe I saw that you were on Zoom. Did you have any comments for us before you take questions from the commission?
No, I think Tyler pretty well explained what we're doing. We had a great workshop. We had a great team participation, both by the Commission, the task force, some user groups, but we have a lot of public outreach to do and to meet with specific stakeholders and user groups. And as Tyler mentioned, our local partners there, Stockwell, who, by the way, we worked with on the state fair, will be looking at the utilities. And then we'll be getting in more building analysis, cost estimating, alternative concepts. But probably the most important part of the process that you did not hear previously has to do with the market demand and economics of the process. And I'd like to introduce my good friend Joel Feldman with CSL, who's probably the premier fairgrounds economics consultant in North America. We've worked together on about 30 projects, and I'd like for Joel to speak to his approach just a little bit.
Thank you, Charlie. Commission, thank you very much for your time this morning. Again, my name is Joel Feldman with Conventions Sports and Leisure International. We're a consulting firm based out of, well, I'm based out of Minneapolis, but we've got offices in Chicago and Frisco, Texas. We specialize in working with communities that are looking into potential investments for public assembly facilities. I specialize in working with, as Charlie noted, communities looking at renovations, improvements, enhancements, development of fairgrounds and multipurpose event facilities that are operating not only for the purposes of supporting county and state fairs on an annual basis, large annual events, but understanding the opportunities for supporting those event spaces year-round, taking a look at the market potential opportunities that exist for hosting the types of events there that would drive economic activity into the Sioux Falls marketplace, that would help grow the event capture within the community as a whole, not just displacing events from one facility to another, but truly growing the overall economic pie for the community, and taking a look at opportunities to enhance those facilities on a cost-benefit basis, taking a look at not only the cost to develop, but the ongoing operational costs associated with improving, enhancing, developing new facilities at the fairgrounds. Very much look forward to answering any questions that you may have and appreciate the time here this morning.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to the commissioners, the questions for either of these gentlemen. Commissioner Karski.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I guess I don't have any questions. I do have some comments. Commissioner Benega, if you have questions, I'd let you ask them first. So my comments, what we have before us is a $165,000 proposal that outlines the process of evaluating our current facilities and reconstructing what we presently have or adding new facilities and then presenting that study to the commission with a, and I quote, "full-color, computer-generated master plan that shows structures, roadways, landscaping, et cetera." All at a cost that I can only assume will be more than double the $30 million that was estimated in the 1999 report that presented essentially the same thing we are paying for in this contract. I have that report right here. In a 1999 Citizens Task Force with notable individuals such as Mike Costanzo, Brad Erickson, Michael Jamison, Jeff Prey, Jerry Sweetman, Carol Tweet, Mike Cooper, Dan Scott, Dana Dykhouse, Sue Salter, Miles Schumacher, Judge Paul Keen, we're all on the '99 Task Force, and they presented us this plan. It's sat on the shelf now for the last 23 years. Very little's changed out at the fairgrounds, but we still have a plan that was put together by local individuals. What I don't read in our proposal is how our current task force will be involved in the discussion of location and financial viability of the potential sale of our fairgrounds and using the proceeds to relocate the fairgrounds to a less industrial location that could be better suited for a fairground activity. And we can do this all while still honoring the legacy of Winona Astell Lyons, her husband and her family. Minnehaha County taxpayers and the greater community are expecting that this study provides some closure to the discussion of fairgrounds' location and the potential sale of the existing property to fund the needed facilities and relocation. In 1999, the $30 million needed to bring the fairgrounds up to speed wasn't in the budget for the commission, and I'm willing to guess that a number that I estimate could be as high as $75 million for this $165,000 proposal will also not be in our budget. What I want is I want to hear from the task force, and I've talked to some members, that if they feel we are moving in the right direction based on what they have seen to date, we have asked them to be involved, and I want to know their thoughts. Until then, putting $165,000 towards a facility study and architectural renderings that sits on a shelf collecting more dust doesn't make sense, and I can't vote for it. And I would make a motion to defer this vote on this contract till July 19th, and at that time, I would like a presentation, I would like meetings by our task force alone without any other representation from the Fair Board or from any consultants, and let them hash out what they've seen to date and come back to us with the recommendation. That would be my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Madam Chair, I would second that motion, but I would also say I don't agree necessarily with Commissioner Karski's reasons. I would say that in one of my other roles as East Dakota Water Development District, the city of Madison had some bad flooding in 2019, and they asked the water district for money to study the issue. Well, 15 years earlier, they had done a similar study, come up with a solution, and the citizens voted down paying for that solution. And so I'm concerned that we don't have a plan on how to pay for this. That said, we are absent one commission member, and I think having her back, we would be able to push forward. And you know, I would really prefer that we acted with unanimity on something as serious as this. $165,000 is a large number for an item that's not in our budget. So that's my rationale.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I too agree that we need to have everyone here, and I have no problem reflecting on this for a few more weeks and voting on it or deferring it till July 19th. I don't agree that this study does not have a benefit because there is a cost-benefit. The study that was done 23 years ago, there's nothing that's been done the same in the last 23 years that I'm aware of that's been successful as the fair has been. I think it's an investment in our ag economy, the number-one resource for the state of South Dakota. This isn't about location. This is about trying to figure out exactly how fares across the country have changed and how we need to change with that market to make sure that we're generating the maximum amount of revenue that we can. I'm not sure about the price tag. That's just frankly a guess. So I'm in favor of discussing this again on July 19th, but I think this dollar amount, although significant, is something that we need to use as a roadmap to get where we need to go, so I'm going to support it.
You're going to support?
The survey to be continued and the contract at some point, be it July 19th, to move that contract.
Okay. So the motion on the table right now is that we move to, as I understood Commissioner Karski's motion, is that we move this item to July 19th and that at that point that the fair task force report back to us without any additional information or anybody being able to talk to them, which I personally can't support. I could support moving this so that we could have an opportunity with all five commissioners here to discuss it more in depth about what's the best path forward to move this item forward. I think we all share a desire to not spin any longer on this issue, but to actually take a step forward that might help bring some finality, as Commissioner Karski said, to this issue. What I think we don't agree on is the best way to do that, and I'm not sure any of us really have a crystal ball that shows us the best way to do that. Commissioner, or Carol Muller.
I'm Carol Muller, Commission Office. My only comment was going to be with the holidays, the Fourth of July, and a lot of vacations coming up. I think the 19th, if you want to go in that direction, is too early to get that group together. I think it will take more than a month to get them together with holidays. So that would be my only comment about it, is just the timeframe.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would ask Commissioner Karski if he would revise his prospective date.
I'm open to proposals or ideas. I mean, July 19th, the 26th would be the fourth. We have a fourth Tuesday meeting, so that one would be acceptable also, July 26th. Is that, you want to move to August? What's the first Tuesday in August?
I would just remind Commissioner Karski that you've got a lot of volunteers on the committee, and it's summertime when people have vacation plans, and to try to have more than one or two meetings.
And that's my exact point, Commissioner, that, just going to my calendar here, that there are a lot of volunteers, and I don't feel that we've given them the opportunity to weigh in on, I mean, spending $165,000. So I would amend my motion to be August 2nd.
I'll revise my second to support Karski.
Okay, so motion and a second. Is there any further conversation? I guess since we have, oh, Commissioner Benega.
I'm sorry. I've had the opportunity to talk to commission-appointed members to that task force, and the number-one question is always about the market survey. It's the first thing that comes up, so I think we need to do it, but we need to do it so that the majority of them can be in attendance. I don't think there's a magic date to August 2nd or whatever the date is chosen to be. I think we need to survey them to make sure that we can get them together at a convenient time.
Any other thoughts on that?
I think it's going to be very difficult to get them together this summer before school starts.
I personally don't disagree with that. I mean, we don't have all the commissioners together again until July 5th, and then we have a number of staff gone for a couple of weeks in the middle of July, and that's just the five of us with a couple of staff. So I also don't understand how you bring those folks together and ask for any kind of direction from them without giving them any information. If I was sitting on that task force, if I was going to be asked to give direction, I would want the opportunity to ask for information and get reports back from folks. And so I don't think that it's fair to ask them, put them in a vacuum, and then ask them to give us direction when this commission has had lots of information and has not been able to clearly agree or identify a solid path forward. We do have Charlie on the phone, and so Charlie, I'm just curious, based on your, you know, lengthy experience with lots of different groups grappling with some of these same issues, is there a possibility of doing part of Step 2 before we do the rest? Like, for example, would it be possible to do the market demand analysis and maybe the cost-benefit analysis and not do the rest right now?
What we'd like to do, Commissioner, is to start off all together, especially as it has to do with the stakeholders, user groups, and, you know, and again, working with the task force, is that both the physical planning and the economics move at the same pace, interviewing the same people rather than trying to backtrack and duplicate all those meetings again. We might have as many as 35 different interviews and stakeholder groups coming in, and it's best when it runs together. I'm not saying it can't be done the other way. I'm just saying it's preferable to get both of the physical and the market analysis started at the same time.
Can you help us, because we seem to be grappling with the issue of this task force that we put together, that a lot of great citizens who have volunteered their time? Can you help us to understand how you envision that group being part of all those 35 meetings that you just talked about? How are they part of this next phase?
I think probably the best approach there would be for Joel's team and my team to do the interviews without any outside influence, so to speak, from staff, from commission or the task force at that point, but to get their objective input and then report that back to both the task force and commission. That tends to work the best. Individuals will talk to a few of us outsiders who speak their language and may not be as willing to be as open otherwise. But, you know, the task force, and this gets back to what you're asking the task force to do, the task force is a very diverse group, and I thought we got some excellent comments on them during the workshop and the site analysis phase. In fact, they were the ones who said, "Well, let's don't jump to any conclusion with these alternatives that we're talking about, that we don't know enough yet, you know, to even talk about alternatives." So we took the alternatives out of the workshop report. I think they will be great input throughout the process, but to get them to sit in multi-days of individual meetings probably is asking a bit much of them.
Anybody else have any questions for the folks available on Zoom today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
You know, appreciated your comments, and maybe rather than having a date specific, we should have staff work on this and come back to us with something that can accommodate others.
I would suggest that if that date comes, if I may, and it's not done, we can always move it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear quite what you said.
If August 2nd comes and the task force isn't ready to, or maybe even wanting, willing to, but from the members I talked to, they seemed to be very interested in being involved in the process, and I would like to hear more from them. I heard things that, quite frankly, I'm not wanting to share right now, but disturbed me that I heard from the task force members. So I would like to give them the opportunity to hash things out as a group.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, unless Commissioner Barth was trying to withdraw his second.
I am not at this point.
Okay, so motion and a second. I think we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
No.
Bender.
No. So motion fails. So I, does anybody else have another idea for how they'd like to move forward?
I'm going to make a motion to deny the contract.
Is there a second?
I'm sure I'm not quite ready to second that. I'd like to hear more.
Okay. So motion dies for lack of a second.
Is there a motion I can make for you, Madam Chair?
I'll be, just hand the gavel over here. I would make a motion to defer this item to July 5th, when we should have all five commissioners here and we can revisit the topic.
That was the motion I intended to second.
So is there a motion and a second?
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
No.
Benega.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And you can have this back free.
Thank you.
I've never held that thing.
All right, we've done one item of regular business, and we will move on. That takes us to item 11, which is a public hearing and second reading for rezoning 22-04 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. Mason, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. So yes, rezoning request 2204 has been submitted to rezone approximately 3.02 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. The property is located southeast, excuse me, of Rowena along County Highway 111, and there is a commercially zoned property to the north. This item has been before the Planning Commission. The first reading has taken place and now requires a public hearing today. At the May 23rd Planning Commission meeting, the County Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend approval of this request, and I will go over some pictures if you want to go down, Jake. So here's just where the property is. So it's sandwiched in between a residential property to the south and that commercially zoned property to the north. And then we can scroll down to some pictures. So here's a picture looking north along the highway. Behind those trees there is where the other commercial property is. And then here's looking to the south. So this is the driveway, yeah, driveway looking to the south, and those trees there to the west are between the commercial property and the, or the proposed commercial property and the residential property. I will just note, in Rowena, it is in the Red Rock Corridor Overway District, which requires some extra setbacks. Those trees on the south property line do meet the setback between commercial and residential properties, so that is enough buffer. There isn't an extra buffer they will need to meet. This is a picture of the current building on the property. Currently, it was explained to staff that this is used as data mining right now, and they basically want to expand this operation to either expand that or further uses in the commercial district. And then I think I have one more picture that kind of shows those trees to the south. And with that, the Board of County Commissioners may vote to approve or deny the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which is an ordinance to rezone property from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District.
All right, are there any questions for Mason? All right, if there are no questions, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here for the proponents that would like to speak in favor of this All right, if not, is there anyone opposed to this item that would like to speak today? All right, seeing none. There's no need for a rebuttal. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Benega.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve, second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 12, which is a public hearing and second reading for rezoning 22-05 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezone from A1 Ag to our rural residential district. Mason.
Yes, Mason Stephan from County Planning Department again. So this rezoning request, number 22-
So this rezoning request, number 2205, has been submitted to rezone approximately 35 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the rural residential district. The property is located directly west of Interstate 29, of Interstate 29 at the Baltic Exit. Currently, the north portion of the property is zoned rural residential for the Coachman's Manor Mobile Home Park, and this request would rezone the south 35 acres in order to expand this mobile home park. The item has been before the Planning Commission, and the first reading took place on May 24. With that, the scheduling for this item was a little mixed around. It was originally scheduled before the Planning Commission for the first reading to be on June 1, or, sorry, June 7, but due to the election on that day, the first reading was moved forward two weeks to the 24th. Due to that, the second reading was moved from the 28th of June to today. It's kind of a little bit of a confusing situation due to the election there. But since on the first reading, we noticed the public hearing for today, we still had to have the meeting for today, but the petitioner is requesting that any action be deferred to next week's meetings, that their legal counsel can be here today. With that, at the May 23 Planning Commission meeting, the County Planning Commission did recommend denial of the request with a vote of three to two, and I will go over the request a little bit if we want to scroll down again. So here's the south part of the property. You can see on the north, above the red line, is the current mobile home park, and the south side is the part that is being requested to be rezoned. You can see half of it is about ag, ag cropland, and the other half is water, sewer wetland, and that pond in the southeast corner is the current sewage pond for the existing mobile home park. And if you scroll down to the next one, I do have this here. So in the current regulations for Minnehaha County, sewage disposal ponds are not allowed in the water source protection area. So this is one of the main reasons why this request was denied. As you can see, that sewage pond is partly in the water source protection area. That was allowed due to this being a property that has been rural residential since before the current zoning ordinance. But if this request was allowed to allow more property, or more mobile homes on the property, that current sewage system would either need to be designed by the state of South Dakota and engineered, or moved out of the water source protection area. And then I will scroll down a little bit to show some pictures. One of the other reasons that this request was denied was due to the one access to the property, and this is that access. So on the north side of the property, it's kind of a Y-shaped access. There's one access off the highway, and then it splits to the west and east. The one to the east goes up to Sunderman Manufacturing and the east loop of the mobile home park, and the one to the west loops to the west side of the mobile home park. Only having one access with tripling the capacity on the property potentially was one reason that this request was denied. And then here's just looking to the south. You can kind of see that Y on the very right side. You can see the road going down, and on the left, you can see the hill going up to the Sunderman Manufacturing. And then we can scroll down here. This is just a picture of Sunderman Manufacturing, just showing how close they are and that they use the same access as this mobile home park. And then here is the actual property that's suggested to be rezoned. So this is kind of showing that it does get rather low in this area, and it is sort of wetland, and this is looking down to where that sewage disposal pond is in that southeast corner. And then here's the last picture, looking a little bit more to the north or southwest. It's showing the croplands that would be where a majority of the mobile homes would be placed. The last thing I will mention is that if this request is rezoned to rural residential, this wouldn't be the final action on this item. Allowing this property to be rezoned to rural residential, the petitioner would still have to apply for a mobile home park through a conditional use permit, because a mobile home park is a conditional use in the rural residential district. So if this was approved, there would still be more review time and process through the County Planning Department. With that, the petitioner has requested to defer, but the Board of County Commissioners can vote to approve, deny, or defer the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to that June 28 meeting.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mason? All right, so we did notice a public hearing, so we are going to do a public hearing if the proponent is here. Is anyone that'd like to speak on behalf of the proponent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Damian Grebble with Earhart Griffin and Associates Civil Engineers for the project. We are here to ask for a deferral on this proposal as late before you. In hearing Mason's statements, I understand that the concerns are the location of the lagoon and the access point. If there are any other concerns that we could discuss at our next meeting, I'd be more than happy to address those at that meeting, but again, at this point in time, we would ask for a motion to defer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, anyone else for the proponent? Is there anyone here in opposition to this item that would like to speak?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to defer.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Paul Sunderman, Sunderman Manufacturing, and I'm really not opposed to this. The only thing that I would ask is, in your consideration to this proposal, would be that you address the bus stop. You know, we've been at that location since 1987. We've seen the census or the population of the trailer court go up and down. We've had a really good relationship with those people. My big concern, though, is the bus stop. It is, and the slide that Mason showed, looking out towards the highway, yeah, if you can pull that up. More yet. This one right here. So if you see on the right-hand side of that slide, there's a line of mailboxes there, okay? In the morning, that is where the, and in the evening or afternoon, that is where the school bus pulls in, okay? Over the years, we've seen, you know, eight, 10 kids there. Right now, I think this spring, there was probably close to 25 kids out there. And in the morning, while we have trucks coming in, we try to tell our drivers if they're making an appointment, that they can't be, they can't make a delivery between 7:30 and 8:15, because we don't want that. We don't want that hazard out there. But there's still a lot of traffic out there. There's people leaving. I've got employees coming in. So my only request is that you would make some provision for a bus stop to be off of the highway, where those children could congregate somewhere else except right up by the highway. So, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now I'd consider a motion.
I would, I'd like to hear myself, too. I would make a motion to defer, and let me say that I don't believe that the school bus stop was ever brought up at our planning meeting.
Okay, thank you.
The motion to defer until?
Do we have a staff recommendation?
Our recommendation would just be next week, June 28.
That's my recommendation.
Motion to defer till June 28, the second?
I'll second that, but I would ask, is that enough time?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We'll consider that next week. So that takes us to Item 13, which is consider a motion to approve a preliminary plan for Renner Corner addition. Mason?
Yes.
You're a busy guy today.
Yeah. So this request is, was submitted by Ron Jensen and DGR Engineering for a preliminary subdivision plan for Renner Corner addition. The landowners for this request are Sorm Holdings, II LLC. This request was rezoned to the commercial district at the May 24 meeting, County Commission meeting. The site for this new commercial development is located at the Renner Corner along County Highway 115. The proposal is for seven new commercial lots on the property, and the Planning Commission and County Commission must approve all preliminary plan, subdivision plans, and the County Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary plan at their May 23 meeting, and they did unanimously recommend approval. So action should be taken to approve, deny, or amend the Renner Corner addition preliminary plan.
All right, any questions for Mason? This is not a public hearing, I don't believe.
I'd make a motion to approve. Second.
It's motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, the next item, Item 14, is a briefing on the gas and liquid transmission facility moratorium. Tyler Clatt.
Good morning, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So on May 17, the Commission reviewed a draft moratorium concerning gas and liquid transmission facilities. The intent of that moratorium is to provide time for staff to research and develop an ordinance. The Commission delayed discussion on that moratorium to allow for the PUC to act on a pending action concerning Summit Carbon Solutions filing deadline. On June 8, the Public Utilities Commission moved to indefinitely extend the decision date for Summit Carbon Solutions so they can finalize their application. The draft moratorium, originally presented on May 17, has been revised to recognize the PUC's application extension and is attached for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much. So I would imagine a lot of you are here today for this item. We've had a number of hearings on this item, I think more than any other issue since I've been on the Commission, honestly. And so if you are here today and you have new information that we haven't heard before, then I would invite you to speak one at a time. I would appreciate if there's a group of you, if you have one spokesman perhaps, that would be very helpful, but it needs to be new information. We have heard a lot of information. People have been very generous with their emails. We've received a lot of emails as well, so. Good morning. I know we've heard from you before, so I'm hoping you have new information for us today.
I have new information, kind of similar to what you need to talk better. Okay, everybody can hear me.
If you could give us your name and your.
And I don't, yes. I'm Betty Strum, and I'm a Minnehaha County resident. The Summit CO2 Pipeline is routed to entirely cross both of my tracts of farmland. I represent at least 230 other landowners that have joined together, and many of them are here to oppose this hazardous, dangerous pipeline. We can't afford highly-paid representatives to promote marketing, to influence your opinion. We take time off from work and obligations to tell you how this pipeline will affect our business, the value of our land, our health, our safety, our peace of mind, and the area where we live. Please understand how important it is for the county to establish regulations to protect people in Minnehaha County. The South Dakota Public Utilities Commission, PUC, does not have the authority to do so. The PUC has stated that it is not up to the, that it is up to the individual counties to write their own ordinances. The PUC will not advise or provide guidance. The PUC does not regulate hazardous pipelines. You need to contact the PUC to clarify that if you want to. Recently, the PUC agreed to extend indefinitely the time for Summit to finish their routing decisions. Some interpret this to mean there is no rush. Please, it doesn't mean you have a lot more time to gather information and develop Minnehaha County regulations. It will take research and work, and it's important to start as soon as possible. Indefinitely is as soon as Summit has determined their route, which they will do as quickly as possible. Understand that indefinite means the date can move either forward or backward. The PUC does not technically cite or route hazardous pipelines. The PUC simply says yes or no to the route that's put before them. So who can cite or route these pipelines? Not the legislature, not the governor, not the courts, not the PUC, but the county, through zoning and setbacks. They can effectively route the pipeline by establishing the hazardous pipeline setbacks, and so it'll be up to the county to do this.
Betty, remember, we're talking about new information.
This is new information.
I mean, I think you've told us about the ordinances before, so try to, really try to keep it to new information, please.
Well, we're asking for the moratorium to do these setbacks, and we're giving you some information about what we'd like.
I think you've given us that information.
Is a one-mile setback from any inhabited structure reasonable? We think yes. How about a two-mile setback from any school, daycare, hospital, or nursing home? Look at a map of our county and plot out especially sensitive uses. We know the county's growing. That need the setbacks. We really want, we really don't want to become a pipeline highway for out-of-state investors and foreign investors that are in it for the tax credits. Please realize that passing a moratorium is extremely important in order for you to have time to develop the regulations that are best for future development plans and the health and safety of your constituents. I also want to point out that Summit in particular has been stating to counties that large amounts of taxes will, they will allegedly pay. They are overstating by 10 times, according to the Department of Revenue calculations, for a county commissioner that called for the Department of Revenue for their opinion. All counties should do this to determine their actual likely revenue amount. Please beware of the New Netherlands CO2 Study that has more information about the area needed for setbacks. Their study shows four and a half miles are needed for safety. There's also the disastrous results from the Mississippi CO2 Pipeline explosion, and I'm sure you've received the link to both of those in your emails, and so I hope you've taken the time to take a look at those. We also thought that Summit was to come up with a modeling, a modeling that shows about what would happen with CO2 under pressure, and we haven't seen that. I also want to mention the city of Hartford. The current pipeline route is extremely close to them. I taught at West Central for 32 years, which is in Hartford, and of course, I'm very concerned about that community. I want to state that we are not anti ethanol. We are opposed to the pipeline due to the safety issues and the web of pipelines that will be created. I'm a shareholder in an ethanol plant. I'm not opposed. The CO2 produced to capture and pressurize CO2 cancels the environmental impact of the CO2 sequestered. Please pass the moratorium to protect the citizens of Minnehaha County. Thank you for your time and attention. This is a very important matter.
Thank you. Is anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Once again, new information only, please.
My name is Brent Neese. I'm with Summit Carbon Solutions. I'm here to talk about pipeline safety. So just here to talk about pipeline safety, there's been kind of questions that, you know, Summit is not going to be regulated in any sense, so I'd like to say that we are regulated by PHMSA and DOT 195, so the same kind of federal regulations that are for oil and gas pipelines. And when you're looking at the design standpoint from the maintenance, construction, and even crossings, there's a lot of standards that are set forth for us that we actually have to adhere to. And we actually have to meet these standards, and in our case, we're actually going above and beyond because we want to be a good, you know, good to the community and making sure that we're working for the longevity of our integrity of our pipeline. A few examples of how we're going above and beyond. So if you look at PHMSA DOT 195, they require a minimum of three-foot depth of cover. Summit will be doing four-foot minimum depth of cover across the entire project, except at road crossings, but we'll be going five-foot depth of cover. When you look at actual construction of pipelines, they require a 10% x-ray of all your girthwells. So a girthwell is when you have your two pipes go together, it's that So a girth weld is when you have your two pipes go together, it's that circumferential weld. PHMSA requires 10%. We are actually doing 100% of all welds, and then going to have a third-party NDT tech, so non-destructive testing technician, come out and review those as well. And along with that, you know, there's concerns about the safety of the pipeline. We will have a 24/7 command center set up where they're watching the flow in, flow out, making sure that they match, the same as oil and gas. We'll also be having, they look at the pressure gradient across that. So if there are any concerns, they can push a button and shut down the pipeline instantly across the board. And we will be the first pipeline that has a new safety regulation that they will have mainline block valves every 20 miles. So usually, in most cases, it'll even be less than that, but you have them every 20 miles, so if there is a concern, you can shut down the block valves.
Madam Chair, I've heard this before.
Okay.
I'll continue, and then, sorry.
Just, yeah, try to keep it to new information, please.
Oh, sorry, have you heard that, sir?
I've heard of that 20-mile deal before. Continue.
Sorry about that. And then, so along with that, you know, we're running smart tools in the line every five years, flying the line. PHMSA requires every three weeks that you fly the line. We're doing that every two weeks, so you can look for any encroachments on the easement and making sure that we're being safe with just, you know, making sure the integrity of the line and what people are doing there. So for road crossings, what I'd kind of like to get into, when pipelines first came around, railroads put in for casings to be at all crossings for it. And there was a concern here of the live loading that you could be inhibiting on the pipeline itself. So fast forward to today, since the 1990s, case pipelines have been phased out as new studies come along that show that in lieu of actually casing, it's actually more beneficial to just go deeper and use thicker pipeline. And new standards are also starting to show that. I have a technical paper that I could share with you after this. But whenever you look at pipelines, your main concern is always going to be third-party damage and external corrosion. So how you battle third-party damage is you go a little deeper at those road crossings and use that thicker pipe. That thicker pipe gives you the strength, so you're not concerned about that third-party damage, as well as, like I said, when you look at how deep you are, you're concerned about the depth of cover just because of the soil on top of you, as well as any cars and stuff. That thicker pipe gives you the strength to combat that as well. And now, when you talk about external corrosion, basically how you combat that is through pipeline coating. So pipeline coating is going to be 99.99% effective when applied correctly. Now, obviously, we don't live in a perfect world, so as a redundant safety precaution, we have cathodic protection across the line. So cathodic protection essentially induces a current on the system. Without cathodic protection, you'll essentially have the electrolytes or the electrons being pulled away from the system. With cathodic protection, we become the cathode in this situation. So if you do have some sort of, you know, imperfection, you actually see the electrons going towards the line. And so there's actually a calcareous deposit. And why we would like to not case is because whenever you put a casing on top of a pipeline, you induce an atmospheric condition, and you aren't able to constantly give that cathodic protection. So when you look at, you know, oil and gas pipelines, they're actually going away from casings, and a lot of their integrity budget is actually going to mitigating a lot of the anomalies that are a cause of it. And you'll see that some of them are even taking them out as a precaution. So just with going along back to safety, you know, we are regulated by PHMSA. We're working with the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, looking at their standards, putting our own standards into place to making sure that we're complying with those. And across the board, we're just looking for the long-term integrity of our pipeline. And like I said, you know, going a foot deeper, it's a cost on us, but we think that's a good cost for the integrity for a community that we're going to continue to live in and work in.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak about, provide new information?
Chairman Bender, members of the Commission. I'm Jason Glode. I'm the South Dakota point of contact for Navigator Carbon Pipeline. Our project is called the Heartland Greenway. If anybody would like more information, we've got a website, heartlandgreenway.com. We've even got a South Dakota page that goes into detail. We're in the process of updating that information because we recently announced that Poet will be coming online with our project. Initially, our project was a short spur of 62 miles in South Dakota, 27.5 miles of which would be in Minnehaha County. But we'll have a larger footprint with Poet coming onboard, and their five ethanol facilities. The new ethanol facilities that Poet will bring on won't change the proposed route that we're looking at for Minnehaha County, so that will remain around 27 and 1/2. It'll impact around 75 landowners in Minnehaha County. And we're further behind in the process than some of it. We're still working on surveying. We're in the process of meeting with landowners at this time. At the end of the day, it really comes down to a partnership with those landowners because this type of project won't work without their support. And really, it is a partnership and showing them the utmost respect that they deserve to make something like this happen. I won't list any new information. Of course, we are heavily regulated already. We're in the process of listening to those landowners and community leaders at this We're finalizing through that surveying process and looking at the environmental studies, rightaways, easements, to try to really fine-tune that proposed route. We've got some rough maps on that same website that you can look at that gives you kind of a general overview of what we're currently looking at now. We don't intend to start our construction until 2024. Our permitting would likely start at the soonest later this fall of this year with the PUC for this project. We respectfully urge you to oppose a moratorium. We don't believe it's necessary. Instead, we'd like to continue a dialogue with the county and the county staff and the commissioners, especially so we can address those unique situations or circumstances that may be outside the existing scope of regulation that we're faced with, and looking at those layers of permitting that we have to address and work with. But we hope to have the opportunity to build a project that we can be proud of, that you can be proud of, the landowners can be proud of, and we can be involved in the community, much like the ethanol industry has done with their ethanol plants across the state. This project really is critical for the future of ethanol, and we want to be a part of preserving that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I know you've spoken to us before too, so please make this new information.
Joy Hohn, and Minnehaha County resident. And I just want to reiterate, I don't think, it has actually been discussed that on May 26th, PHMSA, the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, said that they have come out and said that the regulations that are in place are not sufficient for CO2 pipelines. They are going to be coming up with new rules and regulations. We don't know when this will be. That is why we need the county's protection. So please pass a moratorium.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we have before us this moratorium issue, and it's listed as a briefing. So I thought we were going to take a vote today. I'm pitch-hitting today because our chairman is ill. Tyler, thank you.
Tyler Kla, Commission Office. So at the May 17th meeting, because we were short commissioners at that point too, the action was to defer it so that the actual discussion would take place today. So this is actually the first real discussion amongst the commissioners about this topic.
Okay, but no vote today.
That's up to you, I think, the direction at that time was to just restate the briefing.
Yeah, okay, thank you. No vote today because it's listed as a briefing. I just wanted to clarify that. Commissioner Karski.
I guess I have a question for our planning department, if I could, Scott. Scott, a moratorium could extend for as long as two years. And what we're really talking about is setbacks, depth, regulating it, as has been pointed out that the county can do. How much time does your office need to make this work?
Well, it takes about, at a very minimum, to do a zoning ordinance amendment, you're talking about 90 days to 100 days.
But to study this, to, you know, the science behind the depth, the science or engineering behind the setbacks.
Exactly. And in this particular situation, I really feel that there's going to need to be some public input in front of the Planning Commission. Like, you've been, had people testify to you. I think that would, I think the Planning Commission would find that beneficial, to hear all sides, gather information from different people on what their thoughts are. So I would anticipate the Planning Commission having at least one public input session where we would have people testify and explain their thoughts and concerns, what they'd like to see in an ordinance. Then it would go back to me, in my office, to craft a zoning ordinance in conjunction with the state's attorney to make sure that it's properly written and it would cover the issues that we would like to have addressed. And then we would have a hearing, a formal hearing in front of the Planning Commission. And at that point, from that point of, you know, a hearing in front of the Planning Commission, the bare minimum would be 90 days. That would not, and take into consideration, if the county commission decided to have, you know, a continuation or multiple hearings on this, or multiple opportunities for the public to have input, it could go longer. So I hope that answers your question. I mean, there's a lot of, in this situation, there's a lot of considerations to go into a zoning ordinance. You've heard about setbacks, and there's potential for, you know, information sharing with emergency management, depth of pipes, types of pipe, coatings, double walls. I mean, those are all things that may be included in a zoning ordinance. And then we would, you know, go from there. So does that answer your question?
It does, I guess. What comes to mind is how do you avoid what might be deemed as arbitrary and capricious versus based on science and engineering facts?
Well, some of that is going to be, need to be based on information, the best information that, I mean, you gather the best information that you can, given the proposed use. And we know what the proposed use is. A transmission pipeline, we would look at, you know, the type of materials that can be transported. And I guess I will also then remind the county commission that if we are going to set in play a hazardous pipeline transmission ordinance, there are many types of other things that may be transported that we will need to address. Is that going to methane? You know, there's all kinds of materials that could potentially be transported, and I don't know, I want to make sure that we are fairly regulating all hazardous materials. And so the scope of an ordinance may be much broader than we're anticipating when we're looking specifically or only at CO2 or carbon dioxide. I mean, we, there could be methane, or oil, or natural gas. I mean, I'll have to do research. Is natural gas a hazardous material? Probably is. We'd have to look at the definitions, federal definitions and regulations, and potentially we would have to regulate all hazardous materials. I don't know if we could just single out carbon dioxide.
One more question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Karski, sure.
Is a year enough?
Well, a year would be hopefully adequate. I mean, I can't anticipate all the actions that the Planning Commission or County Commission may take, but certainly at the end of one year, if we're not done with the process, you would have the opportunity to extend that moratorium if needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott while he's here?
Thank you.
Any other questions for anybody else? Comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, this is a tough issue, and certainly we have the enthusiastic endorsement of the project by paid supporters of the companies. We have our citizens in this county that are afraid of what might be coming. And I was watching an old movie, Fifth Avenue Girl, Ginger Rogers, right? Anyway, one of the lines in the movie was some guy sitting at a table. One guy says, "I hate the way that government interferes in business." And the other guy says, "I hate the way business interferes in government." And this is what we're faced with here. We have to try to balance these things. I know the PUC is not ready to make a decision. And honestly, you know, they deny any involvement in eminent domain, but as soon as they make a decision to allow it, eminent domain is on the table. And we don't have anything to do with eminent domain. We do have something to do with the safety of our citizens. I think that Scott laid out a plan that, you know, hopefully the hearings will happen after I'm retired, and Gerald can be there. But truly, it's a tough situation, and I have only been here 16 years, but this is the most email I've received on any particular issue. I do advocate for, you know, a long moratorium. We can always revise it and cut it down, but that's where I'm at with things.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bender.
Scott, I didn't ask you this, if you wouldn't mind coming back, I'm sorry.
Thank you. One of the things that was brought up in multiple conversations over the last few months is about the fire and rescue training. Most of the fire volunteers that we had talked to said they had no information, no knowledge, no training, no support of that particular concern. Can that be put into a moratorium or not?
Well, I think it can be somewhat addressed in a zoning ordinance. In that, in order for a transmission pipeline to receive the conditional use permit or to be approved, however the zoning ordinance is written, they may need to share information specific to, like, emergency management. What steps or what they're transporting. Explain how it can be addressed if there are rupture issues and what might be needed. But certainly, this would have to be an issue that we, it would be a spillover or crossover issue that emergency management would have to be aware of and deal with. So, I mean, we can write in an ordinance that they have to share information or provide information to, specific information to emergency management. I'll have to also work with emergency management and determine what that information that they might like or might need to have is spelled out in the zoning ordinance. Similar to like we did with, I'm thinking of like the medical cannabis situation. You know, there was a list of specific requirements, a security plan, a disposal plan. I mean, that could be part, that could also be included in, not a disposal plan, but similar criteria. It could be required to be provided to the emergency management office.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? All right. Well, I'm sure we haven't heard the last of this issue, but we can move on now. So it moves on to item 15, amendment to the Food Service Partnership Agreement. Warden Mattson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Mattson, Warden of Minnehaha County Jail. Before you is an amendment for our food service contract with our annual price increase. You will note that this price increase is quite large. They've increased by 28.9%. If you have questions regarding that, I can answer them the best that I can. But this, these prices were built into our 2023 budget. I'll also note that our 2022 budget is at about 35% spent, and we're halfway through the year. So this contract runs July to July, so I don't think we're going to have a deficit this year. I think we'll be able to coverage the price increase in 2022, and then in 2023, it's already built in.
Questions for Warden Mattson? Commissioner Barth.
Warden, so is this just an extension and modification of our existing contract? So we didn't put it out for bids or anything?
Correct. This is a, we just signed the new contract with Summit last year. This is an annual price increase. That's what's built into the contract. So it's an initial two-year term, and then four years of extensions if we elect to.
Commissioner Barth.
So when will this contract be up and it go potentially back for bid?
We could go to RFP in 2024.
Anyone else?
I will note to that effect that all the companies are having the same issues. Their labor costs- Their labor costs have gone up. I asked Summit to, you need to break this down for me. Why are we at 28.9% across the board? And and they were forthcoming and they they did provide me with some information. The leading cause of it was their main supplier got out of the correctional food business. So they had to go with, I believe it's Cisco, and they provide food for restaurants and hotels and their their cost is more.
Commissioner Benega.
Mike, is there fuel charges with this contract?
Pardon?
Is there fuel charge surcharges with this contract? Some of the contracts have surcharges in it for if the gas prices go up, their prices go up.
I don't believe so. I don't recall seeing that in any of the language of the contract.
Okay.
Any other questions for Warden Mattson? Commissioner Karski.
I guess a comment. We've been working with Summit for a long time.
Long time.
And they've been a good partner in what we're doing, and I don't see this as well. A year ago, they gave us a sweetheart contract so they could raise the rate this year. I think everybody knows what's happening to the prices of of everything.
Everything.
Every, every, most people, anyway. But I'm supportive of this and I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 16, which is to consider bid results and award recommendations for Highway 130 and 137 intersection improvements. Good morning, Jacob.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Morris, County Highway Department. Yeah, so we had a construction project bid June 1st, which is the, an upgrade of the 130-137 intersection, which is directly south of the city of Crooks. This project would improve safety at that intersection by adding turn lanes to reduce the amount of time the vehicles have to spend in the intersection. It adds an overhead blinking light. East and west is red to correlate with the stop signs. North and south is yellow. And then there was, it would also be a street light in this intersection as well. Our request is that you you award the project to DH paving. The estimated completion date for the project is October 14th of 22.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Jacob, so east and west, there are stop signs, but north and south, there is not, correct?
Correct.
Last year, we had a pretty serious accident at this corner. And from talking to the person that was involved in the accident, he saw the stop signs on the left side and he assumed that they were for the northbound traffic. And it confused him. And so having stop signs on both side of the sides of the road is somewhat unusual, maybe not totally unique. I'm just curious, why were two county roads meet, you wouldn't have a four-way stop?
Why would we not have a four-way stop at that location? If we put a four-way stop here, it would, it would slow down the traffic considerably, the amount of time that cars spend in this intersection. And then there's, there's significantly more traffic that goes north and south. So what you're going to end up seeing is less people stop at the stop sign. You're going to see a lot more stop sign violations if you were to put stop signs in the north and south. In the traffic study we did last year, that is something we looked at, was was always stop at this intersection. And it was ultimately decided this was a better solution. On the dual stop signs, that is something that we implemented throughout Minnehaw County two years ago timeframe-wise. It's, it's something suggested from federal highway, just to give grab people's attention a little bit more.
Okay.
Commissioner Barth.
Jacob, was this one of the intersections we are looking at putting a roundabout in?
It is, yes.
But we're not putting it in on this project.
But we're, sorry, I didn't.
We're not putting in a roundabout on this project.
We are not, no, nope. As far as mobility of the intersection goes and the amount of time that cars are delayed at the intersection, this stop controlled situation was very similar to what a roundabout was. The roundabout costs, costs quite a bit more than what a, a two-way stop did with turn lanes.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to award this bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 17, which is to consider bid results and award recommendations for MC 22-06, structure 50-101-080 replacement. Jacob.
Yes, on May 25th, we received four bids for this structure replacement. The structure is located about a half a mile west of the Tri Valley School on County Highway 118. We like to get our posted structures removed off of our county highways as quick as possible, especially due to the, the grain facility over there at Lyons. There's a lot of farmers that use this. And as it's posted right now, you can't, you couldn't go over it with a loaded truck. We gave the contractors an option of completed either in '22, before winter, or early in '23, before school starts up again. I think August 5th, '23 would be the completion date. The contractor has tentatively selected to complete this project in '22, but they can't commit until they have a contract and know how their other projects are going.
Questions for Jacob?
I'd make a motion to award this contract as well.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 18, which is to consider request to compromise lien DPNO 43073 and release the lien only insofar as the real property upon payment of $200. Commissioner, or Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office staff. Before you today is an action requested to compromise lien DPNO 43073 only so far as the real property with payment of $200. This property goes back several years ago when it was purchased through a tax deed purchase and a lien followed it with a person who had previously owned the property. So an attorney, the attorney, Mike McGill, is representing the property, the current property owners and is asking to compromise that lien against a property acquired by quit claim deed from the county. The petitioner is asking if you will consider compromising the lien with payment of $200 only insofar as the real property legally is described as. The lien will remain in full force and effect with respect to the leany. And I do not believe that anybody is present today representing the leany or the applicant.
All right, any questions for Carol? If not, it entertains a motion.
I would make a motion to compromise the lien for the $200.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 19. I'll just turn it over to you, Carol.
Thank you, Commissioner. Compromise of lien DPNO 36260, which is an amount of $6,109.69. The request is to compromise that in full with no payment. The applicant is here today and does have an interest in addressing the commission directly. The petitioner has been working to clean up her credit so that she can qualify for a mortgage to buy a home in the near future. There is no real estate transaction pending at this time. In her narrative, she explains the many challenges and circumstances that have affected her credit, how her finances are spent, and how she is currently receiving assistance with her rent payments. She also discusses how she has been unable to collect on a $9,750 settlement and can't seem to get the help that she needs to enforce that payment. The petitioner states that she is unable to offer a payment to help satisfy the lien because she is unemployable and only receives $841 in monthly social security. The lien concerns her because she believes that when the time comes to purchase a home, she will not qualify for a loan because of it and is asking for your support in compromising it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Carol? Okay, now the applicant is here. You can just stand where you are. You don't need to identify yourself. And you can speak there if you can speak up a little bit. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Heather Passmore. My situation is really not easy. Like she mentioned, assault me, I get nothing but phone calls, excuses, collect it. It's just, I personally, I don't see how this guy gets away with not having to have to pay my money or not having to have to pay anything. Right now, as you mentioned, I only have two more months of a program that's going to cover my rent for me. And after that two months, by come September, it's going to be almost my whole entire income for security and just for rent. I was supposed to get $150 on my rent for helping my landlord, but he's actually making threats to raise my rent to $700 because he paid for it by Halloween. Next thing, last week, a fire from me and my fiance helping move in some things out of a tenant's property that was evicted by law enforcement. My fiance was attacked and he brought $250, which was the only money we needed to live with the rest of the month. My fiance has been under 40 cent alibis because he brought a doctor note saying he could only work 45 hours a day due to chronic conditions that he had to show for the tour. Me, I tried to get work through Department of Labor, Salvation Army, they used my abilities against me, so it gives me an issue. So the closest thing that I get to work in is helping my landlord. He does new things here, there, getting billed up to it, but I always pressure him. It's kind of bipolar and I don't like to talk to him much.
If you could just keep your comments directly to the the issue here.
Yeah, it has to do with.
Okay, well, let's try to hone it in a little bit closer.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I want to just, I want to just hope that you guys can hear me today. It's not easy for me. I mean, I, I can say I'd be willing to make some payments for what I can or can't afford, but like I said, come September, I'm back to pay the full price and it's going to come on my whole entire income. You know, I don't have no rich family, my loving proceeds, I don't have a job, I'm just barely being got, you know, and my chances of getting into my house, where it's long in the air, stuff we have to put up with, that we don't like to work, and at least I have a place to live. I've been having this place for over three years now, but I, I want to get my own place and that, get, get my own job.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the Commissioners if they, do they have any questions for the applicant? All right, if not, thank you. We'll go ahead, I'll take.
Madam Chair, I would just comment that we don't charge any interest on these liens and that until the, until there's a potential for a property to be purchased, I don't think we really need to take any action. I do think that when that happens, you know, certainly we can talk again, but for right now, since there is no pending real estate and since we aren't charging interest or anything, I think we should just let it ride.
Any other comments?
Are we going to let this die for lack of a motion?
That's what I was going to ask, if there were any motions. All right, if there are.
If you want to show a reason for that exit from home, when things they need to sit.
Right, and I think what Commissioner Barth is saying is that when you, when you get to a point where you identify a home and that you're, and at that point you're looking for financing, that would be the time to come back when there's an actual purchase offer. That's when we frequently take action on these kind of matters, is when there's an action.
When people go about asking for money.
Okay, that's, we're, we're, we've taken your testimony, thank you. You can sit down now. And I'm going to ask one more time, are there any motions? Okay, if not, then this, this matter dies for a lack of a motion. And we will move on to item 20. So item 20 is to consider a motion for a library board appointment. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So the library board provides governance for, an oversight for the Sioux Land Library system. This board is comprised of five members, four city and one county, and two ex officio members, the library director and a county commissioner. The board opening for this position was announced in a press release distributed in April. Applications were due May 27th, and Ann Land was the applicant that was received. The county appointment currently held by Ms. Land expires at the end of June. The library board bylaws limit members to two consecutive terms, and this would be her second term. So we'd ask to consider a motion to appoint her to her second term.
That is my motion.
Second with a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Karski.
Ann's been very active in the board. Jody Fick, library director, emailed me and asked for support, and I fully support this appointment. Just want to put it out there, we've got a good library board, they're doing a great job, and Ann's willing to do another term, and I think we give it to her.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any liaison reports? Now, it's hard to remember what we've been up to. We did a lot of budget stuff last week. Commissioner Karski.
Last Wednesday, I attended the Southeast District meeting of county officials and county commissioners in Menno, lovely small town. It was very well attended. I was amazed at the attendance. There are probably, I don't know, 30-plus people that attended that meeting. Good discussion. It's great to meet with your peers from other counties, and that's where I was last Wednesday from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Barth and then Commissioner Benega.
I'm sorry I missed the free food.
It was good.
Commissioner Benega.
I won't give any of the details at this point. I'll just say that in the last couple of weeks, I've been involved with, besides the budget hearings, the homeless advisory board, the fair board, and the JDC repair and replacement conversation.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of meetings going on. I've also attended the accessible housing board. We continue to try to make forward progress. There's been some changes in the city's structure of their department that kind of oversees that board, and so we continue to try to identify projects that we can make an impact on the housing situation, affordable housing in, in our community. And we continue to meet on the administration building. Progress continues to be made up there. It's going to be time for the state's attorney's office to exercise a lot of patience and because there, we're starting to remodel the second floor. All the administrative staff, commission administrative staff has now moved up to the top floor, and it looks really good up there. So I invite people to come and see. Tax dollars at work. Anything else? Commissioner Karski.
Last Wednesday, I was, I was also supposed to be at the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance meeting that Tyler Clatt from our staff graciously attended. I know he sent out a memo. Did you send it to everybody? Anything to report on that, Tyler? Anything you, comments you want to make on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance?
They didn't have lunch there, did they?
They did have lunch. Gosh, try to remember, a lot of it was the different communities highlighting their different upcoming small-town events, or their teapot days, or I don't know the other names of them, but those sorts of things. They introduced a new staff member who's going to be helping out Hartford, or no, I'm sorry, Harrisburg, and Nikki Gronley, who works for the USDA Rural Development, was the speaker and kind of spoke on the different loan programs and assistance programs that are available to communities around the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, that takes us to non-action commission discussion. Is there any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to refer back to the ballot issues that were discussed earlier. And the fact is that under Auditor Bob Litz, we had virtually the same exact problem. And the issue is that you have more than one legislative district voting at the same precinct. During the redistricting activity, I actually testified to the committee on video out in Pierre and said, make the legislative districts line up with our precinct lines. Because what happens is you have 5,000 ballots for one precinct and 200, or one legislative district and 200 for another legislative district. And, you know, it is a training issue, but it's also staffing. Our auditors are having a hard time getting the staff they need to run these elections, and they tend to be even as old as me. And. And, sorry, Gerald. And, you know, do you want to open the box of 2,000 ballots or do you want to open the box of 250 ballots? Well, the fact they're in different legislative districts, that needs to be ironed out. And our legislature did nothing to help us on this when they drew these lines.
All right, thank you. Any other non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will recess until 10:40. Thank you.